Dear Father, thank you so much for the much needed rain that you have given us. I know you know what we need every single day of our lives. Please be with those that are sick, please be with those that are having issues that we don't even know about, and please be with those that have lost loved ones. We ask these young men to make decisions for you and not for us. And we ask you to hedge up arm of protection around all of our county employees this week. We ask all these things in your son's name and Jesus' name. Amen.
Fledgely to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic's voice sustains one nation, united, God and invisible with liberty and justice.
Discussion on the I'm going to send it. It's.
I'll second it.
Next, broadband, letter support.
Please leave your message for.
I'm calling her. They want us to sign, this is the same one that asked us to sign that.
Please leave your message for two one four four one seven zero three eight nine.
Hi Benny, this is Lenita with Alhappa County. If you get in shortly, please give us a call back and we'll go ahead and have the guys talk to you. We'll just make a motion to go to the next item and go from there. Or you can call myself, five eight oh seven six three seven six eight oh. Thank you. They're the ones that had come and asked us to send this letter, but then they never gave us an example of the letter and so now.
I'll sign it as our supporting. You don't have to give me what to do.
There's two piles here. This is last year's. Gave it up, huh?
That was a different one.
Oh, another one already? See if we're. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane.
What's that?
It's a little like. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane.
What's that?
It's a little like. Oh, another one already? Too much? Let's see if we're.
I'm signing out here.
Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane.
What's that?
It's a little like. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane.
What's that?
It's a little like. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this.
Here's another one.
Tell me if I've ever signed one. Yep. Oh, Bart, okay. Oh, wait a minute.
You have this date?
No, you can't sign them there, Reverend.
Where do I sign them?
I'm sorry, you said sign them, that's the only. Oh, at the bottom. I'm sorry, I apologize. Come on, here, that's it. Is it this one?
Uh, put it.
Eight, thank you. I had a rough week here. I know, that sucks. That's it.
Here's another one.
Tell me if I've ever signed one.
I haven't also. Motion to approve.
There's two piles here. This is last year's. Gave it up, huh?
That was a different one.
Oh, another one already? I don't know. Let's see if we're. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. It's a little like. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Thank you. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. It's a little like. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Thank you. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? Okay, I need Reverend to come over and sign this. Oh, there, without power in the middle of a hurricane. Who else has a requisitioning offer for District Two? This went up with an additional two hundred dollars per month, we paid, um, not quite fourteen hundred dollars the whole year last year, so this is gonna go up an automatic twenty-four hundred. And then, last year, actually in May of twenty-three, so it had been for the previous year, but it was for last year, we, we paid three thousand dollars for them to actually, um, the, them to actually put it on. This year, they're requesting thirty-three hundred, I asked Sarah, I said, we need something, I'm writing on that, is it gonna keep going up, or what? I guess there was a grant that paid for it in the previous year, so now the grant is out.
I guess they have the software to do it.
Yep, yep, that's what she said.
They've always done. Motion to approve resolution. One second. Uh, unforeseen business. Motion, or? One second.